All right, let's go and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for December 12th to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 5:30. And with that, Clerk Boe, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Eight members present, you have quorum.
All right, that takes us to Agenda Item Number Three, the meeting minutes from December 5th, 2022. Vice President Wood?
Thank you. Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes of December 5th as written.
Motion on the floor, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Four. This is public comment on agenda items. We do have several resolutions in front of us today, as well as an ordinance for adoption, which would add Chapter 291 to establish a HUD conflict of interest policy. We will give anybody in the gallery three minutes. We simply ask that you come down on a first-come, first-served basis and state your first and last name for the record. So if you are interested in public comment, come on down.
Loretta, stand away. And tonight, I'd like to talk about the revision, the charter revision question, and why I think that we need to look at that. There used to be, and I don't know when it disappeared, or how or why it disappeared out of the charter, but there used to be a requirement that if dedicated parkland was sold, the money had to go back into either buying new parkland or fixing existing parkland. It could not just go into the Parks and Rec General Fund budget. I don't know where that went, and I think it needs to be back in there. We've recently seen the Waverly Golf Course sale, if memory serves me, I think it was 2.1 million. The Red Cedar Golf Course sale, I think, was 2.3 million, if memory serves me. And in both those cases, the money will be used well, but it goes into the Parks and Rec General Fund. It doesn't specifically go to maintaining, or improving, or replacing parkland. And I think that needs to be back in there. So that's my comment for this evening.
Thank you. Further public comment? All right, come on down, Kyle.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here for Item F, the ballot proposal, for the general chapter revision required by the charter. I think, I just had two questions that I was hoping that might be answered during the discussion portion today. The first one, from, there was some language in the memo from the city attorney's office, and I'm wondering, what are the legal qualifications to apply, to be on the ballot for the Charter Revision Commission, provided it's passed by the people, by the voters? And then my other question, which I think is kind of my more pressing question, is if this passes tonight at City Council, when would this be on the ballot? And my recommendation would be that it be on the November ballot, as it was in 1987, as it should be every 12 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have further public comment? Going once, going twice, and seeing none, we are going to move on to Agenda Item Five. This is Discussion Action, Item B. This is a resolution for the South MLK Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan. Just very quickly, I wasn't, wasn't here for the first public hearing, didn't have an opportunity to speak to this. So just as a little bit of background, South MLK, in my estimation, is, is one of the most critical north-south bound corridors in the city. Runs through the epicenter of, of South Lansing, and frankly, has been neglected for the past several decades. And as a result, we have deteriorating and blighted buildings, we have drop-back plazas that are in deplorable condition, and we have a roving infrastructure. In any event, in recognition of this, back in 2019, we actually approved a corridor improvement authority. We worked very hard with the LEDC to populate that board, along with the administration in 2020. And since that time, in earnest, that, that authority, along with Really Is Christian, who we can't say enough about in terms of his work on behalf of the LEDC, has really, they worked really, really hard to put together, I think, a, what is really a tremendous development plan, as well as a really, really good finance plan. They did that in a collaborative, I think transparent manner, included a number of South Lansing residents and business owners, and so we really appreciate that. Essentially, what will happen if we approve these documents is that it, it's an allowance, essentially, to capture the growth on, growth, I should say, growth in taxes associated with the growth of property values over a 15-year period. And then, essentially, those dollars and resources are able to be used to implement the provisions of the development plan. Some of the projects with regard to the development plan would be Logan Square Shopping Center redevelopment options, developing a microloan program for small businesses, incentives for developers to redevelop vacant or blighted buildings, traffic calming and streetscape improvements, organizing efforts to clean and beautify the corridor, organizing business owners and establishing network, networking opportunities, and developing a branding strategy for the corridor. And of course, that's among other things that are actually a part of that development plan. We did have two public hearings, as I referenced earlier, one on November 14th. We had some noticing requirement issues, so we had another public hearing on December 5th. Okay, so this past Monday. All emails, comments that we received have been generally supportive. Frankly, the only criticism that I've heard is that the $1.6 million in anticipated capture over 15 years is not going to be nearly enough, and, and I don't disagree. And when you talk about a corridor that's been left to erode to that, to that degree, it certainly will take more than $1.6 million as part of a very concerted effort, I think, to move that corridor forward. However, we also are able to, with these tools in place, as an example, pull down grant dollars, as a city we can supplement, state can supplement, so certainly, we can use these resources to leverage additional resources to move that corridor forward. I want to thank, once again, Really Is Christian, who's actually in the audience. You did a fantastic job, I really appreciate that. I want to thank Carl Dorsheimer with the LEDC and your entire team, Chris Klein, we appreciate you, along with the, the Authority Board of Directors, led by Price Dobrnik, who is the chair, and then the citizens and the, and the business owners in South Lansing. So as one part of a, kind of a two-man team in South Lansing in terms of word representation, I can't tell you how excited I am that we are finally at this place. So with that, I will turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. And with all those comments, at this point, I would move the resolution to adopt the South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Development and Finance Plan.
All right, if approved, this will be up for passage later tonight. With that being said, is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to Item 5C. This is an ordinance to add Chapter 291 to our codified ordinances. Essentially, what this would do is establish a conflict of interest policy for HUD programming and HUD dollars. So you think of continuum of care, you think of home, you think of ESG, community development block grant programming. This was actually a requirement of HUD, so we actually put this ordinance together, along with the city attorney's office. Once passed by this body, this will be conveyed, essentially, to HUD for approval. We did have a public hearing on December 5th, and this is up for final consideration later tonight. So with that, Vice President Wood.
Thank you. And based on the comments that are made, I would like to add Chapter 219 to establish HUD conflict of interest policy to our ordinances for a vote at this evening's council meeting.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion? Hearing it, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to Item 5D. This is a resolution for the issuance of Sewage Disposal System Revenue Bonds for CSO Program. We do have Alec Malavitas, if he wants to come on down into the well. He can come right down into the well. Take a seat, yep, just make sure the mic is on, which will be indicated by a green light.
Could you, could you pull it up just a little bit? And is green light on? There it is. Is that better?
All right. Alex, or Alex.
Nobody ever accuses me of talking too softly. As most of you folks know by now, we know these days, in 2019, we got a consent order from the state for our CSO program. It had been contained, contained in our, the schedule for completion of the CSO program had been contained in our NPDS permit, but because we failed to meet the schedule that was required, it's now in a consent order. I think you folks are all aware of that. So based upon that, we got additional time till 2032 to do the bulk of the, 95% of the remaining sewer separation. And in the consent order, it actually names the near-term projects, you know, to just kind of keep our feet to the fire. So this loan that is, this resolution will fund two of the CSO projects. The next two is CSO projects that are named in the consent order, that specifically have to start construction by June 1st. I think it's honored before May 31 of '23. Good news is, because of the American Rescue Plan funding, the same unit that processes our SRF loans, regarding the SRF loans, because of the huge cost of construction, we're using the SRF loans to spread out these costs, and we pay them back through the sewage fund. We pay the loans back through the sewage fund. Of course, they're low-interest loans, 2% typically. One bit of things that are different, because of the American Rescue Plan funding, we will actually get approximately 50% of the loan-eligible cost of the project be a grant, which is great news. And also, it should still be available for the projects that we'll bond for next year. So the American Rescue Plan funds, I think they have to be obligated in construction projects by 2024, but this year and next year, we will get, this year, we're getting 50% of the eligible water pollution control funds in the form of a grant. So that's good news. That will be about $16 million each. The loan, we, we established a ceiling in the resolution that's $26 million. We think this is going to come in significantly less, based upon our construction estimate, but because of the crazy bidding that we've had the last couple of years, we want to make sure that we've got adequate coverage. We hope the bonds will be actually less than $17 million. But again, to summarize, these are projects we have to do, we're mandated by the state, and this is our primary funding source for these projects. We will use other funding sources to make up the difference. BWL's got a big amount involved in this, these projects, of course, we always do their water main work at the same time, and we'll use some road funds and some sewer funds for things that the loan won't cover to make the funding complete. And that will be, you'll see that in our budget requests. And with that, I wanted to turn it over to you folks, if you had any questions.
All right, we appreciate the presentation. Do we have questions, comments? Councilmember Jackson and Vice President Wood?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, so it sounds like all this by 2032 is very expensive, for the whole thing to be complete, which we did agree to in the consent agreement, it sounds like, and that we're covered-ish for the short term. How does it look like as far as funding for the long term? Is it even possible to do all that work within that time?
Good question. It's a tremendous amount of money, but the, the sewage fund fortunately is healthy. It'll get low, we've done, we've used our financial advisor to confer, we did some financial projections, but we have a financial advisor that works for the city, Baird, and they did some projections for us, based upon the revenue that we have, current revenue, and it should go up slightly, but even without significant revenue increases, it'll take some time. We were doing 20-year loans, we are now going to do 30-year loans, to make sure that we don't push the fund too low, but it will, the, the fund balance will drop during this time period, but all projections show we can't afford it, though it's, it's a huge sum of money, but it's going to be spread out over time. Yes. It's unfortunate. Had we done it when we were supposed to, it would, now the cost of everything is going up so much, had we done it when we were supposed to do it initially, it would save hundreds of millions of dollars, but that was out of all of our hands here, that's a story for another day. But yes, it's, it's a significant, it's, just the cost of the sewage fund is going to be over half a billion dollars, and we've probably added to it by delaying the work, but that's why we have a consent order, and we do, you know, we can look at the bottom line, but for Lansing and the quality of life here, we're one of the only communities in the state that routinely discharges raw sewage. We got, if you look on the state's website, we're, they're required, required to report the discharges around the state, and we are required to report to them, and they're required to report to the public. You've got Detroit, Dearborn, and Lansing as the remaining communities in the state that routinely discharge combined sewer, untreated sewage. Detroit treats a lot of their sewage, primary treats a lot of their combined sewer discharges, and Dearborn's are lower volume, they're a smaller community, they're working on theirs. So Lansing's definitely arguably one of the worst in the state in that regard.
Vice President Wood?
Just a couple of things. Alec, could you give us the two areas that this funding would be used on?
Yes. The, there's two projects, 015 South is a very big, it's one of the biggest project areas, it's going to take three seasons to complete. That is kind of generally bounded on the east by Butler, Sycamore, some of these, they're irregularly shaped as far as the blocks they cover, but it's kind of Butler-Sycamore on the east. South of Saginaw Street, Lapeer going west, Saginaw Street's kind of the north boundary. It goes all the way over to Verlinden on the west side. We're not on Verlinden, but we're, we're just east of Verlinden in the neighborhood there. And then, it's kind of Ionia, Ottawa on the south, going over to MLK, back over to MLK. So it's, it's a big area there, that's the, the big project. The other one is a smaller project, as far as CSO projects go, it's going to be a one-year project. It's going to be the last in our 034 area, and both of these will allow closing off regulators. 15, there were two big project areas, 34, there were five. This will be the fifth and final. That one is, it's kind of a triangle, green lawn by the old hospital that closed on the south, South Washington Avenue on the, the west side, and then it's kind of forest, it doesn't go onto forest, but it's that little neighborhood just east of Washington Avenue. And that one will be a one-year project.
And then, with respect to Councilmember Jackson's question, the sewer fund, every year, we increase that sewer fund by 4% as part of...
Correct. Well, yeah, it's 3% to 4%.
Yeah. And that's what's on the BWL bill that then is collected by them and then comes back into the sewer fund.
Yes, like many communities, we raise our rates annually.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right, do we have further questions or comments? Seeing none, we appreciate you being here, Mr. Malavitas, and Vice President Wood, we need a motion.
Thank you. I would move the resolution for the issuance of the Sewer Disposable System Revenue Bonds for the CSO project to be on the agenda for this evening's passage.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question for you, do, do you think you've, I've, you've been adequately briefed that you don't...
I don't think you need to be here tonight.
Thank you.
That's the question. Yep, thank you.
Yep. You knew where I would, what I was going to ask. Thank you very much.
That's what I was going to ask. That's what I was asking.
All right, thank you. That takes us to Discussion Action Item E. This is a resolution pertaining to Public Act 425 Agreement Windsor Township. Just very quickly, Consumers Energy is moving its Mid-Michigan Operations Center, essentially from West Willow over to 7,000 North Canal Road. This is, among other things, one of the things they do from this operations center is they dispatch crews to take care of outage issues in, in their service territory. So when they announced the move, they cited freeway access, not having to essentially traverse through neighborhoods with big trucks and heavy equipment, that type of thing. And so although we are incredibly sad to see them go, we are happy that we were able to work out a 425 agreement, so that the city of Lansing can benefit from the development, from the property taxes, from the income taxes, et cetera. And so although this will be in Windsor Township, for tax purposes, it can be considered city of Lansing. Just a couple of things, construction of new facility, as I understand it, will begin in 2024. And then to assuage some concerns with regards to residents in the area, business owners in the area, they will then move to demo the building, abate any, any environmental issues that might be on the property, and then prepare that site for market. So with that being said, we also had a public hearing on December 5th. Comments generally have been supportive. Again, there has been some concern conveyed about what will take place with regard to that particular property. The folks over at Consumers, particularly their economic development arm, have, have worked hard to, again, assuage the concerns of folks in the area, and so we appreciate that. With that being said, Vice President Wood?
Thank you. At this time, I would move the Public Act 425 Agreement with Windsor Township.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, further discussion?
I got a quick...
Yep, Vice President Wood?
When is Windsor Township voting on this, or have they voted on this already?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, further discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It takes us to Item F. This is a resolution pertaining to a ballot proposal for a general charter revision question as required by the charter. Just very quickly, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Abud. Our charter, adopted in 1978, does, there's language baked in there, essentially, that requires that we go to the voters every 12 years and ask whether or not we should essentially open up the charter and consider general revisions. We are to that, to that point, right, 2023, and to the question earlier, this would actually be on the, my understanding, the November 7th ballot of 2023. With that being said, we did, as part of council leadership, we did convey a number of questions over to the city attorney's office in terms of how we, we operationalize this. We did receive a memo, you all have that, but I am going to turn the floor over to Mr. Abud to speak to the questions that were conveyed and also the answers that his office put together. Okay? Mr. Abud?
Thank you, Council President Hussein. This is an interesting process that council has to do every 12 years, and next year is the 12th year, according to our city clerk. We don't disagree with that, and council has presented us with several questions relative to this process, and we have answered those questions directly. Basically, there's several steps that have to be employed. The first one is that there has to be a ballot question for the voters. Secondly, if the voters approve the ballot question for a charter revision, then council has to, then, well, there has to be an election for the commission, the Charter Review Commission Board, of which the Home Rule Cities Act states there shall be nine members. And so that election would have to be held within 60 days of the voters approving the vote. And then, there's another, the council would also have to pass a resolution for the budget for the Charter Review Commission. And, and then, once that budget is passed, then the electors are nominated, they are elected through the election, and then the Charter Review Commission has a period of time within which to make recommendations and to pursue a charter, a new charter. The Home Rule Cities Act says that the Charter Commission shall do this within three years, or it shall cease to exist and terminate. The other requirement is that it gets three rejections. So if they propose, make a recommendation for a charter, they do that, and it gets refused by the voters, they can do that up to three times within that three-year period of time, but at no time can they exceed the three rejections or that three-year period. That's basically, that's a, that's a quick summary of...
So can you answer the, the question we had earlier with regard, maybe I missed it, but the requirements or qualifications for the Charter Review Commission members?
It's interesting, the charter, the, the Home Rule Cities Act that we look to for this dictates a process. However, it says that if your charter also has a process for this, that it would defer to our charter, and our charter does. Now, there is an eligibility, a legal eligibility requirement under the Home Rule Cities Act that is not inconsistent with our own charter, and that is that the nominee live in the municipality for three years. Our charter also has the legal requirement that the individual, the nominee, has to have been a voter within the city of Lansing for a year prior to taking the office. And then finally, our charter and the Home Rule Cities Act defers to legal requirements from the Election Law Act. So there's a minimum age, I mean, there are certain requirements, and those are the legal qualifications that the city attorney believes are required for a nominee to go in and nominate themselves, or be nominated by somebody, and pay the $100 nomination fee, or application fee to be placed on the ballot.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Wood?
And I think that's where I was going, you're using the term nominee, and when we think of it from a political standpoint, it's the party coming together and nominating someone and so forth, but isn't this similar to either paying $100 or getting signatures? Is that correct?
Exactly. It's, you're allowed to nominate yourself, and the reason why we use that term is that's the, that's the heading for the chapter that we're working under, they call it nomination. So we're using the term nomination, but you can nominate yourself or someone else.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there additional questions, comments? Councilmember Jackson?
So it sounds like this is just mandatory as far as our passage today, even though I don't like when it's like, we get to vote, but we have to do it, and I don't know, that doesn't seem like we should even have to vote, but this is fascinating. I never thought that, it's almost like a dream, hearing all this stuff coming together, and it sounds like it'll be on the ballot, so I'm excited to see how it works out.
All right, further questions, comments? Seeing none, Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the resolution for the ballot proposal for the charter, for the charter general revision question, that would be on the November 7th, is that correct? November 7th, 2023 election.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and for Item G, closed session, I'm going to turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Pursuant to MCL 15-268, paraphrase, three, city of Lansing will recess and close session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. Open meeting will have a determinate financial effect on the litigation and on settlement provisions of the city of Lansing concerning these cases, and we would like to include Jane DeSessa, even though I wrote it out phonetically, to be included in the closed session.
Those cases include Atkinson versus city of Lansing at all, Burwell versus city of Lansing at all, Career Quest Learning Centers, Inc., and Little Rainbows LLC versus city Lansing treasurer at all, Charter Township of Lansing versus Bar Byram at all, city of Lansing versus Faday, Inc. at all, city of Lansing versus OCOF Nonprofit Housing Corp., city of Lansing at all versus Purdue Pharma at all, Deprecal versus city of Lansing at all, Fire Farm LLC versus city of Lansing, Freeman versus city of Lansing, Hardy Gregory versus city of Lansing at all, Hardy Jonathan versus city of Lansing at all, Hulan versus city of Lansing at all, Kurmani versus city of Lansing at all, Legacy Five LLC versus city of Lansing, Lynn versus city of Lansing, Phillips versus Ingham County at all, Sanders versus city of Lansing, Stewart versus city of Lansing at all, USA and Coleman versus city of Lansing, LJ E Jolly Cedar LLC... City of Lansing, LJE Jolly Cedar LLC, MTT case, which would be Michigan Tax Tribunal.
All right. Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Mr. Abud.
Just briefly, Clerk Boak indicated that the cases that we would be discussing include those cases. Those are the only cases we'll be discussing, are the ones that were listed. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk Boak, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember. Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
No.
Motion carries, 7-1.
Why not? Why not? It's up, good. Yes. You guys are both.